The remain standing and after the pledge, we will be led in prayer this evening by Counselor. I'm sorry. And Fred Madder will be lead us prayer after the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. God, we pray and ask for your blessing. Bless this council openness to your will. Bless them with discernment in the matters at hand. Bless them all born with wisdom in the decisions made. God, we pray for all those who are serving on this council and all public servants. Bless them with peace of mind and courage. Bless them with your presence in the moment of a crisis. Bless them with safety. Bless them with their passion and wisdom in their deeds. God, we pray for the people of Greenwood. Bless them with your presence. Bless them with safety in their activities. Bless them with good physical and mental health. Bless them to have a reason to hope. God, may your presence be a light for us that gives direction to our lives. May we seek you and find you in your own understanding of faith. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call. Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Gibson.
Here.
Bill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Milton.
Here.
And Williams.
Here. We have a call. All of you should receive copies of our minutes from the last regular meeting of January the 4th. Motion. Lexi, second.
This motherfucker.
Base. Excuse me, if you're online, if you would mute your microphone, please. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? You're in and then roll call on the minutes.
I.
Campbell.
I.
Gibson.
I.
Bill.
Hopper.
I.
Lexi.
I.
Milton.
I.
And Williams.
I.
Minutes are approved and vote of eight to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
Yeah, I didn't tell you semi-monthly report is available on SharePoint for anyone.
All right. Anything over the troller at this time?
Nothing at this time.
Other committee or board reports, since our last council meeting, we've had two RDC meetings. And so you should receive our report on both of those. If you have any questions, please let me know. And you have a committee or board reports? Moving on, public comments tonight. If you're here, wish to address the council concerning an item that is on tonight's agenda, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. There is a five-minute time limit per person and a 20-minute time limit per topic. So please keep that in mind.
Thank you. My name is Napra, I live at 489 Overland Drive in Greenwood, area 6.43. I'm here tonight as the District Vice President of Johnson County Professional Firefighters, Local 4252. There are two items on the agenda tonight that I wanted to address. First of all was Amendment 2303. We want to thank you for admitting the PTO policy for our active reserve members of the military. It's an important step in supporting our military members and their time in service to our country. As many of us are learning, it's no longer one weekend a month and two weeks a year. A lot of our guys are going away for six months a year at a time. And as a veteran, I specifically want to thank you for that. The second item is Amendment 2304 that concerns the merit ordinance. In 2020, members agreed with fire department, fire chief, along with city councils, corporate council, mayor's office, and help from our union legal worked diligently to incorporate the state statute as our merit system. Part of that intent was that the ordinance, having been invented at the state level, would not be opened at will by the city administration without the firefighters and especially without the commission members having some knowledge or input. The amendment addresses communication between a firefighter or police officer or their representative with members of their respective commission. Although it's obvious that there should be no direct contact between someone facing charges and their jury, there should be some way for firefighters and the firefighters in general to speak with their representatives. We believe this is an issue that should be discussed by the commission members and worked into the American Commission rules, not a local amendment to be adopted against the state statute. I want to reiterate that we're not against the idea of protecting the integrity of an investigation. We feel, however, that any changes in merit law should include the merit commission, the merit employees, and the city. Our main concern here is not legal or ethical matters of communication to an merit employee and their respective commissioner. It's a lack of communication between the city administration and merit commission and merit employees who are affected. Our police and firefighters have worked very hard the last few years to build a trust and a good working relationship between ourselves, the administration, and the city council through our meeting confer. And we appreciate the work that the council has done with us on that. However, opening and admitting the ordinance designed to protect our merit members with no prior knowledge by those of us most affected, we believe sets a dangerous precedent that for the drugs and wedge and the trust that we have. That's all I think.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to address the councils at this time concerning items that are on tonight's agenda? All right, moving on, ordinancees and resolutions. At this time, I entertain a motion to move Resolution 2304 to the front. A motion by Mr. Hopper to move Resolution 2304 to the front of our agenda. Do you have a second? Second one is Gibson. Any discussion on this motion? All right, hearing and then roll call on the motion to move Resolution 2304 to the front of our agenda.
Bates.
I.
Campbell.
I.
Gibson.
I.
Bill.
I.
Hopper.
I.
Lexi.
I.
Milton.
I.
Williams.
I.
Motion passes on a vote of eight to zero. So with that, Resolution 2304.
Order number 2304, ordinance admitting agreement with fire department merit system that have prohibited commissioner ex parte communications.
Resolution.
Last one on the back.
Thanks. A resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood, an economic revitalization area, applying certain real property improvements for tax payment, setting the time and place for public hearing. Anderson Howzer, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Just for clarification, this is an introduction tonight? So this is all right. Ms. Turner, welcome back to the council meeting.
Thank you. It's great to be here before you all tonight and to see so many familiar faces. Although I will admit, it's a bit odd to be on this side of the coast of Tennessee with you. But we thank you. For those who don't know, I'm Krista Tiger. I'm Deputy General Counsel for Anderson Howzer. I have with me here today Brandon Ferguson, who is Vice President of Human Resources for Anderson Howzer, and Scott Young, who is President of the Georgie Booth Company. We appreciate you hearing us tonight and we appreciate your consideration in moving us towards the top of your agenda. So today, I'm here to talk about a very exciting project, which is the development of 70 acres, which currently is vacant farmland, US 31 and Warsaw Road. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Brandon to just provide a little bit of background about the Anderson Howzer company.
The most fun I ever had to talk about the company, but it's also hard to explain what we do. So I always tell people we sell, or that I sell dog food at Carina, because it's easier when you're in a, you to a, like a car, a Lyft, or Uber. Because if you try to explain what we really do, they start to gloss over. So I'll try to make sure it's somewhat easily understandable. At the most general, basic level, we have world-class, state-of-the-art instrumentation that measure things going on in pipes and tanks. So solids, liquids, gases, and even pH in plants that are producing things such as food or clean water, medicine, all over the life sciences business, oil and refinery, chemical upstream and downstream. We are rarely ever, our products aren't really seen in public. So you wouldn't really see our devices. I think one might be in Broken Barrels window looking out into the, into one of their tanks. But mostly you have to go to one of the plants around the world. We are first or second, depending on the product, sometimes we're third. And we have come a long way in the United States since we, I'll tell you a little bit of history here in a second, but we're now solidly number two in the United States. And in about a handful of years, we'll be number one in what we do, growing rapidly ever since we've been here. So let me go ahead and advance the slide right here. What I'd like you to take away from this is when we visit a customer site, they want us there because they have a challenging measurement application issue that they can't figure out. They've had engineers look at it. They've had a lot of smart people, technicians and other people. And we come in with our know-how of tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of applications around the world to figure out how to measure something where it's going to be safer, it's going to be cleaner, it's going to cost them less money, and it's going to ensure the quality of their products. So if you think about medicines, every single pill has to be the same. And that's what our instruments and other devices, like Scott is going to talk about, what his company does with in partnership with us. Do we have, you know, from the instruments to the files to control panels and lots of other systems, this is telling organizations what's going on in their plant. How can they do it cheaper? How can they do it more safely and continue to get the highest quality possible? We do this by way of application know-how where our products are in any kind of billions of combinations. And what I mean is, we don't just make a bunch of stuff and it sits on a shelf and waits for customers to order it. Everything we make is specific to that challenge. So it does take a lot of really smart technicians and engineers and others, product specialists, industry specialists, and people that really want to get to know the customer, to figure out what's their problem, how to solve it. We came to Greenwood in 1973. That was around the time Lieutenant Governor at the time Orr was working with the Chambers of Commerce in central Indiana and in Greenwood specifically to try to attract foreign organizations here. We still do that on the economic side. But that was kind of maybe what I would say the first big push coordinated effort when Mr. Endress wanted to expand into the United States. He just had a little chop in Beverly, Massachusetts for a while. We were, we were just selling German instruments. When we got to Greenwood, we were starting to make these instruments for the US market. Everything we make here in Greenwood goes to one of the Americas, mostly the United States. So we're, we do this all over the world. Wherever we have a production site, that production site serves that location, which is really cool. Today, we have about 500 employees on campus. I think it started at nine at that 1973 mark. We also have a huge campus in Greenwood. We have a campus, a small location, I could say, in Ann Arbor, Michigan. And we have several locations in California. We did get to a point where we were saying, do we go ahead and expand our Houston campus? Do we go ahead and build a campus in Southern California? Or do we double down in Greenwood? And then that's when it came, hey, if we could get that acreage right on the west side of us, we could be here forever. We could keep expanding and expanding here in Greenwood. So that's what's happened. We're pretty excited. The sales of over 600 million, I just celebrated my 20th anniversary with Endress. And when I got there, we were 50 million. So we've doubled a few times. And in a couple of years, we'll double, we'll have another double from that 400, 800. So 50 to 100, 100 to 2, 2 to 4, 4 to 8. And like I said a little bit ago, when we become number one in the industry, we will be right around a billion dollars. So in about five years, we'll be a billion-dollar organization here, right here in Greenwood. Okay, I'm going to hand it over to Scott.
Thank you. My name is Scott Young. I'm the President and Managing Partner of Georgie Booth Company. So the Booth Company has been the representative for Anderson Howzer since 1973 in Indiana, southern Ohio, Kentucky. So we sell all the products they manufacture where the sales are. Our team is currently located west side of Indianapolis. Been at the location, the company started in 1963. And we've been probably within about four square miles above West 10th Street that entire time. So go here is our company is, we're a major distributor of process instrumentation, all products related to the services that these customers require that Brandon just talked about. We are privately held. The Booth family still has ownership along with the managementers. This is a big move. We would be in the building if they're proposing here. So we would relocate our corporate headquarters to Greenwood. Today, the Booth Company about $100 million. We have about 130 employees as of this month. And we continue to grow. We have about 50-ish, 50 to 54 probably. And this would be, I guess, essentially, yeah, it would be based out of this facility initially. We'll grow that out of, over time. I think pre-COVID, we had 62 employees, we're at 130 today. So that's essentially the growth rate that we're on to keep up with what they're trying to do here from $610 million. We have to do the same. So we have been the exclusive sales partner for Endress, like I said, since almost 50 years now. And we continue to grow. We look at ourselves, we're going to kind of allude to, as a holistic provider. So these customers, whether they're chemical plant, food beverage, pharmaceutical, water, waste water plant, come to us. They come to us for Anderson Howzer equipment and everything else that's associated with that process. So whether it be tubing, fitting, valve, instruments, panels, we do it all. So we take everything that we can package to give that customer a solution instead of just a product. With that, the majority of our team, our inside group, our outside team, it's technically degree-to-degree engineers. We have a lot of engineers working locally with universities, treasuring. But it is a strategic partner with Endress. It's exciting for us to have an opportunity to get into a facility like they do put on campus. They're state-of-the-art out there. And that's a big deal for Booth Company. We're going to give it back to Krista.
And then these are just some of the other companies beyond Anderson Howzer that the Booth Company right here works with. And so what we're here to talk about today is this piece of property. So I'm sure all of you are very familiar with it. It's one of the few pieces of frontage along the US 31 that is not developed. And as you can see, towards the edge there, that is the backside of our campus, that's our flowtuck building there. We were currently getting into a position where we were landlocked. As Brandon indicated, we were at a turning point to decide, are we going to continue to expand in Greenwood? Or do we look to expand in our regional facilities of Houston? Or our area in California, or Philadelphia, or the southeast? When this property became available, it is currently owned in a trust by a family. They were very insistent that they wanted to sell all 70 acres as one unit, which is a bit challenging. And the property also has a few challenges with the two creeks that are bypassing it. As you can see, the current AP and the current taxes of the property are very low. It's currently taxing at about $23 per acre. We were very lucky. We were not in a position to purchase all 70 acres. We want to purchase 35 acres. So the idea is to split the parcel down the middle upwards, you know, north to south, with us getting the 35 acres that affects our land and our campus, and then work with the developer for the frontage of US 31. We have worked with Unicorp National Development Inc. And together, we are under contract to purchase the property, hopefully closing in April. Unicorp is a national development company that has retail, commercial, and multi-use experience. So the plan for the property, as I said, is to divide the plant into four parcels. And as you can see there, I'm not great at coloring in the lines as Adam teased me with my highlighting there. But the blue box, block one, will be where we will build this new building that we're going to talk about today. Anderson Howzer will also own the green block. That will be for future expansion. That could either be by the sales center, which is the entity that Brandon is with, or it could be with one of our manufacturing centers in the future. The yellow and the orange block will be owned by Unicorp. They have immediate plans to develop the yellow block with retail, so restaurants, shopping, those type of things. And similarly to us, the orange block will be for future development in the years to come. To see how things develop and what the needs are. To the right, you can see the site plan for our building. We're excited about it because it allows us to have a new second main entrance into our property. Our current entrance is right up against the railroad tracks and a hill. And it's a little bit of a choose-your-own-adventure at 5:00 p.m. when you want to get out and make a left turn. So we're excited about that. We're excited. As you can see in the building, here's the first look of the building. It's a beautiful building. We've been working with Brownie Day as the architects. You may be familiar with them. They were the architects for your field house here at Greenwood. The wing, the big wing here on the left-hand side of the screen is the Anderson Howzer office wing. The wing towards, more towards the back of this screen will be the GE Booths office wing. The central corridor will have shared spaces, conference rooms, a STEM innovation lab for K through 12 graders to further our workforce development that Brandon will talk about in a little bit. And then the back of the house is more light industrial. So that will be GE Booths fabrication shop, warehousing, camel shop, et cetera. So the Anderson Howzer Innovation Center in Georgie Booth headquarters is supposed to, it's designed to be 120,000 square foot commercial office and light industrial facility. It keeps creeping up a little bit. Might not trying to creep it back down to the budget, but we're, it'll be that big at least. As I mentioned, Brownie Day is our architect. Ariang, he's also done some work for the city. They've done Gold City Park post recently for the city. Is our landscape architect. The building will host 190 employees when it is fully occupied. Those employees will consist of engineering, legal, HR professionals. The average annual salary that we've committed to in our SB1 is over $80,000 per year. 55 of those jobs are retained. So that will be my department, the legal department will be moving there. The HR department, Anderson Howzer projects and solutions engineers will be moving there. So we've made the immediate new jobs to Johnson County at Greenwood through the relocation of the GE Booths company. And then Anderson Howzer is committed to adding 75 new jobs over the next 10 years, and the Booths company 20. We expect to do that and probably more. By moving some of us out of other buildings, this also opens up space in our other buildings for employees to go into those. We are, one of our core values as a company is sustainability. We measure things. So we're really excited about the energy transformation and all of the ways that that can take us, from water, stormwater, to, you know, hydrogen, renewable energies. So one of the things that our family, Anderson family, has stated is they really want to try to do net zero energy buildings. So the goal for this building is to be net zero energy, net zero carbon, and LEED goal. And LEED is an international standards organization for sustainable environmental architecture. If done, it will be the largest net zero energy and net zero carbon building in Indiana, the first one to meet both of those standards. And it has the potential to be one of the largest projects in the US. Most of the projects in the US to date are a couple thousand to perfect office facilities. To be doing it in a light industrial facility, it's really, it's really an achievement. We recently did it in Canada, a net zero facility there. It was the first privately funded facility in Canada to reach the net zero standard. Other ones had been done by universities and public entities. We've also committed to a minimum assessed value of 26.48 million. And you'll see in the SB1 and at the tax resolution, we have committed to not challenge that, to not assess it as long as it comes in within the range of what we purchased the property for. This is just a brief summary of the high-performance features that you'll see in the building. So on high schooler energy, ground source geothermal, using rainwater as a resource. We are going to be insulating like crazy. For those of you who know our values, we're looking at our values of 38 ton on our walls, which is just, you know, crazy. So in order to make it energy efficient, we're going to do some really neat ends with daylight in order to keep energy use down in the building. I will turn it over to Brandon to talk a little bit more about the people and the innovation side for the education.
Yeah, you did a really good job just to talk about some of the positions that are going to move over there right now. Legal, HR projects, these are project managers, sort of highly technical engineer, project managers, solutions engineers, et cetera. But the cool thing we're excited about is this innovation center. In our existing sales center building that's getting ready to get remodeled, we have an innovation studio. There was a little bit of press out there. Nicole Hadi, who used to run Central High, her center, she's been with us for almost four years. She found some money through grants and we created this innovation studio where classes of K-12 local schools come in and get a makerspace, real-life STEM environment to play around in. It's really neat. We're going to expand that, make it a smart classroom in this new building. It's going to be awesome. So public, I mean, the public coming in through the schools is going to be awesome. We'll see one more slide, I believe. Yeah, and then just to back that up, in 2014, we really plunged into the workforce development and the philanthropy side for Anderson Howzer in the local community. Somebody who'd probably been to our community career and education forum that started in 2014, that we have about 1,000 students from middle school typically come through each year and see what it's like to work in today's modern manufacturing environment. We donate lots of money to the education foundations for STEM and other programs. Give early grants to teachers. Separately from that, we give money to academic banquets and all kinds of things. The need is given in, Krista, back before she became an Anderson Howzer employee, twisted her arm to donate to the city center park, which we're excited. Adam was part of that as well. Greenwood Field House has our name on it. We're very proud of these things. Apprenticeship program, we have one of the neatest German-American apprentice programs around. We keep expanding that, started with two a few years ago. I think we're going to graduate 12 this year if that keeps expanding. So our whole idea, we were working with Aspire Johnson County when I was one of those early folks that got involved. We're like, hey, let's try to figure out a way to keep our students here in Greenwood and here in central Indiana. And we've been committed to that ever since. And this new building with the STEM, with the innovation center, it's just going to get even bigger. So, thank you.
Thank you. That was briefly about you. From your team's comment?
Yes, just the roles from the George Booth Company that would relocate here to the company headquarters. So it would be all of our leadership team would be here. Our finance, human resources, the majority of the inside sales team for the company are based here in Indy today. Like I said, most of them are degree engineers. We have a handful of outside sales engineers based out of this facility. And in our fabrication, we have panel shop, fabrication, assembly, which is valve assemblies, and then warehousing. The panel shop fabrication, we're constantly looking for new talent, trying to understand how we build that talent and grab it locally. It's hands-on work. We have multiple service companies within our group. Then we have guys out on site that service the equipment Anderson Howzer sells. We do POC programming, all the things out there. So part of the innovation center that they have in exposing the next generation to what we do, how we do it, the ability to earn a strong, good living in that world that we live in is important. So our team is definitely a part of it. And this is just an example.
So those of you who know me, I don't do numbers or math very well. So I'll put credit to this slide to Adam Stone. So this was put together by your financial advisor. This is the summary of the tax abatement that is before you tonight. As you can see, we have agreed to a modified schedule. The dollar amount ends up being very similar to what a standard tax abatement is. But as you know, a standard tax abatement usually starts at 100% and then it bursts down to 5% in your tenth. We're doing 50% across the board. The benefit to that, to you all, is that taxes start flowing through to the entities immediately as opposed to later years. That can help fund some infrastructure improvements that are necessary for it. As I stated earlier, we have agreed to a minimum assessed value and not appeal it if the assessor has been lower than that. For that one. And then just a brief, as you know, that parcel has sat vacant and it has sat vacant for a while. Some of the reason is that we will have to do some necessary infrastructure improvements. The biggest one being crossing that creek. So we're still looking at engineering different ways to do it best. But the idea is to create connectivity between the three parcels. But the idea is to create connectivity between the three parcels and to be able to allow connectivity over that grass and creek and poultry. With that, any questions or comments? We're happy to answer that.
Any questions? Comments?
Thank you for having us tonight.
Yes.
We very much appreciate it.
We appreciate all that Anderson Hauser's done, city Greenwood's involvement. Look forward to staying here for a long time.
Thank you. Right. Orders and resolutions, notice of intent to consider, ordinance number 2301.
Norance, amending common council ordinance number 2218, rezoning of 16 acres located at 374 North Emerson Avenue. Correct in error of new description and amend admittance as modified sponsored by Hopper.
All right. We'll talk about this.
Hi, my name is Niall Olson.
We need a motion. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Niall Olson, I'm a development manager at the G R Company. We are the developer for this project.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we, we do need, we have motion for Mr. Hopper to have a second. Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. So this ordinance today is clear, or I guess revising the legal description in the recent ordinance. We realized that accidentally a portion of Emerson Avenue was included in our legal description that we had in the recent ordinance. So this updated legal description removes Emerson Avenue. So we're only rezoning the property, not any portion of the right-of-way. And then in addition to that, I wanted to clarify the intent of the city council commitment number four, which states. Have a replacement tree for every tree removed in development. I'd like to clarify that that was intended for only the southern property line.
Make a motion to amend language around the commitment that the tree replacement commitment was tied to the southern order of the property.
We have a motion to amend ordinance number 2301 to clarify the commitment on the trees on Mr. Williams. Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? Hearing done, then roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2301.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
And Bates.
Aye.
Ordinance 2301 is amended with a vote of eight to zero. All right. And is there any questions about the legal description? All right. Then hearing done, then roll call on ordinance 2301 as amended.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 2301 passes on vote, as amended passes a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. There are no ordinances under first reading or second reading. And so brings us to new business introduction and new ordinances, resolutions, ordinance number 2302.
An ordinance amending to section 278 of chapter two, article eight of municipal code, 1993, relating overtime policy addressed work weeks that include a paid holiday. A paid holiday or holidays sponsored by Campbell and Gibson.
Is the best you want to talk about this?
Good evening, Lisa Best, Director of Human Resources. And so as it currently stands right now with a work week, for example, of 40-hour employee. If a holiday falls within that work week, then if someone is in exempt status and if they have to work late or over 32 hours. Because that would be the work week there with Monday being holiday. If someone worked 35 hours that week, they will not get three hours of compensatory time. Which is as it is right now, it states that they have to work their full normal, regular work week hours. So 37 and a half, if it's a 37 and a half hour, 40 if it's 40. The same goes for the overtime. We want to make sure that if an employee is due to work 40 hours within a work week and a holiday falls within that work week. And they work 35 hours and if they are non-exempt, then they will get the time and a half for the hours worked. So that is what the amendment is for, is to make sure that our employees are being compensated either by compensatory time or the time and a half.
Any questions?
More, more comments, questions, is any of this taking place presently?
It has been for years. There, there's just some of us that we work, you know, 40 hours in a holiday week or 38 hours in a holiday week. And we just do it because we do our work and things need to be, be done. But it's something that we needed to look at and we want to have that rectified and make sure that our employees are being compensated. Whether it be the compensatory time for those exempt or time and a half for the non-exempt.
So is there any need to expedite this or is it good in the normal procedure of things?
We can proceed as normal if we want, if you want to allow for substantial rules, we can do that, but we can't proceed as normal.
I'd like to offer a motion to suspend rules. Bring this in first round.
Right. We have a motion with Mr. Bates to suspend the rules, the first reading of an ordinance 2302. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on suspension?
I have a question. Ms. Best.
Suspension.
Yes. Because I might want to see if it's mine. When I talked with you earlier today, you said that we didn't have anything in there for it to be retroactive. And so if we wanted to make that retroactive to include the meeting that we had at the first of the year. When we had several employees that worked here, I just wondered if we wanted to have two dates of that.
If, if you would like to go ahead and do it retroactively, we would love for that to happen. If it's something that would be a little too much to, are you then interested in that?
Well, this is a motion for suspension. Any, any other discussion on suspension? Hearing done, then roll call on suspensions rules, the first reading of ordinance 2302.
Yell.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Hi.
That is a vote of five to three. We, how does that work with it?
It's still passes, I think.
Still, well.
That's all.
But you have to have two thirds, don't you?
That's all.
No, they have to be unanimous in a second. Yeah, I think when, when we had to have six votes and there were nine. And.
Say so. I don't remember.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
I think it's because I don't think there's all of it.
Yeah, well, I don't think there's all of it coming up. And then with respect to the. If I could, I looked this up this week. It's actually in the Indiana code and I don't know the percentage, but I have this quote set. Go ahead. I apologize, Joe Sailor, Assistant City Attorney. And then before we go retroactive, I'd like to make sure that Greg looks at the numbers to make sure we can afford it. Seems like a good first step.
I'm pretty sure that we had to have six votes when there were nine of us. And it had to be two thirds. And if three votes wouldn't stop it, on nine votes, three votes definitely wouldn't stop it on eight. So I'm going to say the motion to suspend the rules, the first reading failed on a vote of five.
Two thirds of the members present. Well, it says two thirds of the members present in voting must vote in the affirmative.
Still, two thirds of eight would be over five.
For a 62%.
Right. So, all right, motion to suspend rules fails. You want to amend it?
It would depend on Mr. Bates because it's his amendment to start.
No, no, that wasn't an amendment. That was a motion to suspend rules.
Yes, I would like to amend it to be retroactive. But I know that Mr. Hopper asked what Mr. Wright would, would say about whether we had the funding.
Mr. Wright, you have a comment on?
I'd have to give a payroll and find out how many people would be impacted by it. Because pay period, most reasons it started on the second, so that was a holiday. So there may have been people who were first meeting this year impacted. So I'd have to give a payroll and sit down to what that estimate is.
We're not moving forward on it too late, so I won't make an amendment after Mr. Wright.
If you could get the information for us by the next meeting, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. You can just stay there. Ordinance number 2303.
An ordinance amending Green Municipal Code 1993, chapter two, article eight, employee benefits established from military leave sponsored by Campbell and Gibson.
Well, tell us about this.
Okay, so obviously we are in a position where we have military personnel. We have military personnel that work for the fire department, the police department, the street department, our CDS departments, our airport. So we have widespread military personnel as staff here at the city. And becoming familiar with a long-term leave for one of our staff members and researching our ordinances. It was necessary for us to make an amendment for our military leave. The carryover of 120 hours is for firefighters. And then other city employees has an 80-hour carryover. So if what we want to do, if somebody is going to be gone six months or more. We want to be able to allow them to carry over more in the way that it's currently written, they cannot. So if somebody is gone for a year, they might be able to use some of their PTO at the beginning of the year. And have a lot of PTO left at the end of the year and not be able to carry over what I feel and mayor and deputy mayor feel. Is something that they deserve to have. If they're out serving our country, they're being deployed. We want to be able to give them some of their time when they are deployed for a longer time. And not just leave it as an 80-hour carryover, 120-hour carryover. So that's what we're bending, that carryover policy for military leave. Zero or 30, excuse me, to below. Is going to be that regular timeframe that we have. So that part's not going to change. But then if it gets six months and higher, then we want to be able to allow them to carry over.
All right. Any questions? I know you've requested that this one be made retroactive, but I don't think making it retroactive will affect. Would cost us any money at this point. So I would entertain a motion to amend ordinance 2303 to make it retroactive to the first. So this year, motion, Mr. Bates, second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the motion to amend ordinance 2303? Roll call then on the amendment to ordinance 2303.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Billington.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson. Aye. And Hill.
Ordinance 2303 is amended or going to be zero. Thank you very much. Ordinance 2304.
Norance amending the Greenwood Fire Department Merit System to prohibit commissioner ex parte communication concerning disciplinary matters sponsored by Hopper.
Someone will speak to this.
Good evening, President Campbell, council members. My name is William Barrett. I'm attorney of Williams Barrett and House to hear in Greenwood. I'm here representing both chiefs, the chief of the fire department and the chief of the police department. So I'd ask at the outset, if I'd be allowed to consolidate my opening comments to make here for 2005.
Yes.
Thank you. A little bit about my background. I am regular counsel to the Franklin Police Merit Commission and the Trafalgar Metropolitan Board of Police Commissioners. And in disciplinary matters over the years, I have represented either the merit commission or the chief. In cases before the Franklin Fire Department, Franklin Fire Merit Commission, the Greenwood Fire Merit Commission. And the Carmel Police Merit Commission. This is an area in which I practice regularly. And I've been asked by the chiefs to come tonight and explain the rationale for proposed changes to the police ordinance, police merit ordinance and the fire merit. Now, I know we've got a lot of members of the public here, so if you'll indulge me just a moment. I'll, I'll start with the very briefest of civics refreshers, separation of powers. You, the city council, as the makers of public policy for the city, listen to your constituents. You might hear somebody talk to you at the barber shop or the grocery store about ending ordinance, whether you should consider it or not. And that's all well and good. That's democracy in action. And then you have here, it's such as we're having right now. And you listen to the input of the public and interested parties. But who doesn't do that? Courts don't do that. Judge Gregory can't do that. If I have a case in front of Judge Gregory, whether as a lawyer or because I've got the speeding ticket, I can't call him up and talk to him. Everybody's starting to twits that. We all, we all know you can't call a judge and try to, try to make your case without the other side being there. So the question is, as to the police and fire merit commissions, are they more like you or are they more like the court? The answer is they're both. They are both, they act in what lawyers and judges call a quasi judicial capacity or quasi legislative capacity. You know, sort of like a legislature or sort of like a court, depending on the nature of the thing in front of them. So when those bodies change their rules, if they change the entrance standards for a police officer or a firefighter. Or the testing procedures or the, or, excuse me, or any other procedural change that they might make, a rule change. They have to hold here. They have to give notice over here. Not an open door notice, not a two-day, it's a 10-day notice over here, just like you. Then people can talk to them about it anytime they like. Because they're acting like a little legislature, changing the rules in their little corner of the world. But in the disciplinary case, when the chief says, merit commission, I want you to suspend or terminate or demote firefighter. We're a firefighter or we're a police officer. They put on, they put on a robe, at least for metaphorical purposes. They act like judges. And that's why there shouldn't be any contact. And there was a comment earlier about the city's compliance with the state code, trying to have the state code drive what goes on. In two, in the two commissions. And to that point, I did want to cite a statute. That's the, really the most relevant one. We have a code 36 dash 80 dash 3.5 dash 17. Can't read the subpart without my glasses, but there's a subpart. That says, additional, but a decision to discipline a man may be made only if the preponderance of evidence presented at a hearing. Supports such a course of action. So if you allow a circumstance where someone can try to communicate with the commission. You have two problems. One, whatever outcome is reached is subject to attack. is subject to attack based on this statute. Probably haven't had a reason to consider it, but someone who is found liable and is subjected to discipline by either commission has an absolute right, an absolute right, to go to court and have that decision reviewed. If you don't have in place some guardrails that say, keep away, this statute opens up an avenue of attack on review. Because you can say, well, hey, John Doe talked to Commissioner so-and-so, and therefore there's no way for the court to know whether the decision was made properly on the basis of the evidence in these four squares of here or whether it was based on the communications outside of here. No way. The other problem, and it's almost more important than what happens in cases, is undermines public confidence. How can the public have confidence that a police officer subjected to discipline, who may not receive discipline, hasn't had, hasn't had some opportunity to get an advantage? Same as true of a firefighter, things go either way. Someone trying to get out of trouble, or someone trying wrongly to put someone in trouble. Hey, you know, can I assure that Officer Doe, he's not a good guy, he's done nothing wrong. So substantively, there's no reason not to have a look like this, and I'll give you an example, and then I'll talk about process and I'll be done. The example is, and it's part of the reason I'm here, is I had to deal with this in Franklin. At a very high-profile police discipline case where I represented the merit commission, the police officer and his supporters, not former police officer, the police officer and his supporters tried to influence the merit commission members. And it really twisted the process. It required, made the process take a lot longer, be a lot more expensive, and it subjected the process to a lot of review in the paper. And it led, in Franklin, to the passage of an ordinance just like this. Finally, a word on process. There were comments earlier that this should get a hearing at the merit commission. Well, the ordinances, statutes drive the ordinances, the ordinances drive the rules. As your council will tell you, if you ultimately pass this, these ordinances, both merit commissions will have the whole appearance to adopt changes to their rules. Now, those, those, those changes to the rules will have to be within the guidelines that you've set, but there is an opportunity for input there, and even though a large stop when he said, one more. The language of the ordinance is clear and expressed on its face, and your council can tell you this. The ability of a member, whether police or fire, to communicate with any member of the commission, not just the members of the commission they elect, but any member of the commission about rule changes, standard changes, anything that the commission is going to do in its quasi legislative capacity is unaffected by this. They still have that absolute right. It is only in the context of a disciplinary case when this ordinance would be necessary, these folks have put on their robes and again talk to you. So I, I'd encourage you to consider it, pass it, we're happy to take your questions.
All right, any questions?
Thank you for your consideration.
I guess I do have a couple of questions. So back to what Mr. Rich was saying, was there a reason that the commissions weren't brought into the discussion when this was thought about being brought forward to us?
I honestly don't have, have not participated in the process other than concerns were raised in the last case in which I represented the fire merit commission about this, this hole, if you will, in the ordinance. And this, this hearing tonight is the result of that. What happened in between Iowa and San Antonio wasn't.
Would our deputy mayor be able to speak to that as far as why that communication didn't take place?
I have no idea.
And then also back to what Mr. Rich was saying. Does the ordinance have to pass for there to be a change in their policy, or can they just make a change in their rules without the ordinance?
The ordinance would have to change for you to have this this add-on to the statutory. This add-on, the record stems from a quote that I read.
So if this language is inserted into their policy, what's, what's the penalty? You're saying, you know, there can be no contact. What would be the penalty if there was? I mean, even if after this.
Not by the merit commission. The language of the ordinance would say that a member who attempts to have such contact is subject to discipline up to and including termination, depending on the consequences of it.
By, by the merit board?
Only the merit board can terminate. Either chief has a limited measure of discretion to suspend someone just for a few, a few days. Anything above that requires the chief requesting the merit commission again to suspend, demote, or dismiss someone.
So I'm trying to, I'm definitely not allowed. Okay, so if there's contact, what would be the proper way to report that? How do you, how do you prove, oh, he said something to me?
The ordinance sets up a self-report requirement on the part of the commissioners. Each commissioner is obligated, if he or she is approached by anyone, a correspondent, a person being disciplined, or any other member, to say to their colleagues, this is happening, and then and then the ordinance will either create a requirement of dismissal, dismissal from, or recusal, stepping aside by the commission if they've been affected by that. And then separately, if it's a member who spoke to them, that person is subject to this, whether it's the person who's answering disciplinary charges in that case, or someone speaking for them or against them.
All right, any other questions?
I have two things to ask. So just clarifying my understanding, your involvement in this has been starting when there was concerns raised, you've not been involved in the process of writing out the rules statute. So you're kind of coming.
Fourth quarter. They asked me to come tonight because of my background, both in the Franklin case that I've used as an illustration, and because this is an area in which I practice and have done this very, this very step in the process.
And I think not so much maybe a question versus maybe just a comment, you know, obviously I'm pretty sure all of us at some point in the past speaker have been contacted by someone that serves our public safety. And there was huge concern around this, just the way it was thought. And I think you kind of hit the nail on the head, right? It's about trust in the process. And I think the way it was handled was probably built, you probably should have had some more open lines of communication to ease those concerns before we bring it to a public forum here at this evening. I think that's the issue that we think about. So I just want to make a comment on it. Again, Terry, you said you don't know the communication. I'm not asking for that answer tonight, but I think if we really want to build confidence and trust and process and the system, having that open line of communication like we talked about with hearings, getting notice of things that are coming out would maybe extend some of the activities that we've had in the past seven days.
All right, any other questions or comments?
I have a question for Mr. Foster. Do you know when this session, that this might have started?
I believe Mr. Saylor can.
And then have we had any situations that this has been a problem? Or can you speak to that?
I think that your second question could be spoken to by Mr. Barrett. I can't speak to your second question, I can speak to your first. Answering the second question then first, that was the genesis of why we're here tonight, is the last case in which I represented the fire merit commission, there were concerns about attempts by people to talk to commissioners during the event.
And, Mr. Barrett, are you sitting in Franklin or here in?
Here, here. Six months ago here.
My name is Joe Saylor, I'm assistant city attorney, and Corporation Council asked me to come address your question tonight on this. Because while I have not been present, participated in the entirety of this, when I came to the city about two and a half months ago, I was one task with providing this final draft. There was previous draft and I was tasked with revising it. As to the question about the communication, I cannot speak in particularity to communication on the fireside. I believe that occurred before I came to the city. I do know that there was consultation with the leadership of the fire department about this. Beyond that, I can't particularly speak to that. I saw the police side, I can tell you that the police merit board did consider it and voted in favor of that their last meeting. And I addressed an issue and concerns that they had. And just to touch a little bit upon everything that Mr. Barrett had said, when I got this draft, I went through it and I went through the federal and state law basically surrounding what are considered adjudicatory bodies, which is any type of order panel sits as an administrative judge, as the merit board does. And, and this, this does not impose any duty or any burden that doesn't already exist. Both Indiana law and federal law, particularly the Seventh Circuit, make it absolutely clear. And I'm just going to read you a couple of lines from a couple of cases. In the case of the Indiana Court of Appeals, "Ex parte communications are impermissible in adjudicatory settings, but they are rightly accepted and even expected in legislative settings," exactly what Mr. Barrett said. When you're sitting as a judge, you're not allowed to ex parte. And within the, the federal side, with only a few exceptions, such as prison and discipline cases, "ex parte presentation of evidence denies due process." Functionally, that's what this is about. It's about that there's a process for this dispute, whether or not this person is disciplined or not, whether there's a process that is inherently fair to them. And whenever you end up within a adjudicatory body, sitting in judgment, that is considering something other than the evidence in front of them, i.e. an ex parte communication, the law is clear, it's a denial of due process. And one thing I really, really want to emphasize about this is that in, in reviewing all the law on this in Indiana and in the federal appellate district that we exist in, this exists primarily for the protection of members of service. It exists primarily for the protection of the firefighter civil police. Because almost all of those cases, without exception, are where either a member of the fire department or police department leadership, or another politician decided that they wanted to make sure we got rid of this guy. And they did something, they either went behind the back, or they had a member of the body that was making the decision also prosecuted. That's a, that's a big one. That's, that's Indiana's seminal case on this, Mitch Wachabie Stewart, or Stewart v. Mitch Wachabie, where basically a firefighter fighter was prosecuted by a member of the same board that then jumped off this here, sat up there and voted to fire. Same thing with the, with the, with the federal case law. That's an Illinois police officer where at the end of the hearing, the mayor and the chief of police were allowed to present some extra evidence without it being disclosed to the defense. And where they took that into an account, and he was never given the opportunity to rebut it. So all of these cases are basically members of service getting their jobs back because they were denied due process. And this ordinance, as I drafted it, I made it very clear, it does not justify members of service. It applies to a party, so the chief or the mayor who's directing the chief, a representative of party, a person acting on behalf of a party, if they are doing those things without the presence of the adverse party or without following the rules on pleading a notice and they get, they get copies. It is prohibited. This does not justify that. It applies across the court. And I want to make, I really wanted to touch on that, because this is not some sort of attack on members of service or taking away their rights. What this is, is codifying so that everybody knows. Everybody knows that under the law, you get to have a judge who somebody hasn't messed with before. And that's, that's really the, the intention here. And last call, I promise, last call. Under the current law, you can get redress for a due process violation. You can take it to the court of general jurisdiction, you can sue and try and have your discipline overturned. You can end up appealing that, you can file a federal civil rights claim in the Southern District of Indiana, take that to the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals. That's the current status that we have. If this is passed, if a member of service believes that there has been ex parte communication adversely to them, this gives them an additional procedural right. They can make a record of it, and they can ask that the remainder of the commission force the recusal of the affected party. So if they believe there's a party who's been tampered with and is getting a significant bias, they have a new recourse now that they can ask that that person not be allowed to consider their case. It establishes an additional procedural right at the first hearing level of the disciplinary proceeding where a member of service can assert, hey, the people that are supposed to be deciding neutrally, fairly, impartially, with no dog in this race, someone isn't, and I would like them not to sit on my case. As of right now, that does not exist. So I, I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of an explanation of where and how some of this was drafted and why, and that it is not directed simply at members of services trying to ask any part of it. And, and then to answer any further questions.
Any questions for Mr. Saylor?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And I didn't need to interrupt Mr. Barrett, so if anyone has questions.
Any other questions, or anyone?
Your, your pleasure. I don't have anything to add.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Ordinance number twenty-three oh five.
An ordinance amending the Greenwood Municipal Code nineteen ninety-three, Chapter six, Article twelve, Merit System of the Police Department to prohibit Commissioner Ex parte communication concerning disciplinary matters sponsored by Harper.
Mr. Barrett said that his comments on twenty-three oh four applied to twenty-three oh five. Mr. Saylor, is that true with you as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments in the council about twenty-three oh five? All right, ordinance number twenty-three oh six.
Ordinance aligning the Greenwood Municipal Code policy on small purchases with Indiana Code five twenty-two eight-two and formalizing the Greenwood Board of Stormwater Management as a purchasing agency sponsored by Lex.
If anyone wants to address this. All right, ordinance number twenty, or resolution twenty-three oh two.
A resolution adopting Indiana Code five dash twenty-three, private, public, private agreements and taking certain other actions related later to sponsored by Gibson.
Good evening, Greg Wright, City Controller. Resolution twenty-three oh two specifically applies to what is known as a bill, operate, transfer agreement. It is a type of public-private partnership. We are exploring doing this for the first time in Greenwood in relation to Fire Station Ninety-five. Some of the, the way this would work is the city would issue a RFP, RFPQ for an architect and a construction manager, which would then, once we get those back, that would have to be approved by council to award that contract. But what happens then is we go and work with them to design what we need in that building. They finance it, they build it, and then there are a couple of options on how we purchase it, whether we issue a bond and buy it flat out, or whether we do like a lease rental type agreement with the the construction manager and architect, they have a third party that works with them on that. But in either case, the benefit to the city is we are getting the risk held by the builder until we take possession of that building. So right now, we build something, say, Station Ninety-three. If something happens and there's a change order that comes up, we're on the hook for how much it costs, whatever that cost is. So maybe we issue a bond to pay for it, and something happens, there's a change order, and I've got to find another hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars to pay for that that we didn't plan on. With the bill, operate, transfer, the way it works is we tell them what we want, they design it, we say. With the build-operate transfer, the way it works is we tell them what we want, they design it, we say, yes, that's the design we like. Let's go with that. They get all the pricing. They say the maximum, if you will pay for this is X. You sign on the dotted line for that number. As long as we don't make a change to that design, that's the maximum we'll have to pay. There's a change order, and it goes up $100,000, they eat it. It's not on us. We, they take all of that risk of any change orders, any kind of supply chain issues. But if it goes the other way, say lumber, when they price it out, lumber's at one price, by the time they actually get to construction, it's gone down. Our contractor will contemplate a sharing of those cost savings. So it may be a 50-50 split. So the, the way that that is enforced is the contract also requires them to have an open book for us to review at any time and see what their contractors are charging and whether or not they are generating savings, in which case we would participate in that. We did something similar with the West Coast Regional Interceptor Project. We did that under what's known as the GMAX contract, Guaranteed Maximal Pricing. But those require that you have energy savings, which we did by taking the station offline with that project. That one ended up, I think we saved almost $2 million at the end of the day for what the guaranteed maximum cost was. But with this one, the biggest benefit is we don't take on the risk of changes in the pricing, changes in construction. We do have all the input we need on design. We actually have the opportunity to ask them to utilize certain developer or certain contractors. For instance, we may not care who does the concrete work, but because we have a specific type of security camera system, we may need them to use a certain vendor on that. So we can say, hey, use this vendor and get the pricing, whatever it is, we're going to end up paying for it. But we can say, we prefer these vendors, make sure you talk to these vendors, you know, we want to make sure lower vendors are included. So we have a lot of options there in the planning, development side of things. We don't have to take on the cost risk. We don't have to issue a bond on the front end, not knowing what the plan of cost is going to be. By the time they get to the end of the construction, that's when we have to issue the bonds. And we actually end up saving on bond interest as well.
All right, any questions for Mr. Wright?
Mr. Wright, just to confirm that any project, any RFPs, would then still need to come before council?
Correct. What this does is allow us to start that process. But anytime that we want to use a build-operate transfer, requires statutorily that we go through the RFP process and that the council will award that RFP.
And Mr. Wright, I, I think I understood someone to say that we'll be pretty much duplicating what we did on 93, so we don't have to worry about plans and then something changing because we see how it's shaping up.
Right. And, and we are still working on the design, so it is going to be somewhat a mirror of 93, except all the things that we learned that didn't go right in the back will be fixed in, in 95. But because we have all of those design plans, we do expect in the RFP to pass that they utilize our architect. And so whoever comes in, the construction manager side, would need to utilize our architect on that because they have it all listed.
You say this will eliminate change orders?
Yeah, so Thank you.
Yes.
There aren't any change orders because the contractors work for the developers.
Right, yeah, well, since being on the RDC for the last several years, it seems like change orders are just normal practice. No.
Kill our buttons every time.
But it sounds good to me. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. Resolution 2303.
A resolution approving certain amendments to the Eastside Economic Development Area, sponsored by Harper.
Anyone want to talk about this?
Hi, good evening. Here tonight on the Redeeming Commission. This is a small, four-parcels allocation area that is being allocated for the Arlington Farms payment project at Carrington Road. This project has a declaratory pass, Redeeming Commission, and then last Monday, the order was passed, adopted by the commission. And this is the first step of council process. And if, if it passes the council level, it can go back to a public hearing of all the the Redeeming Commission or final decision. Happy to answer any questions that I, that I
All right, any questions for Mr. Stone? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This line is business. This is an opportunity we set aside for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you were here, wish to do so, please step to the podium and take the name and address the record.
I want me, so I almost
And there is a five-minute title.
Hi, Dale Martin, Free Pilgrim's Drive. And I am here based on the, another new apartment building coming up in a Tiff area. And I would like to speak against this new apartment building, a five-story building, which will cost us all sorts of money. Receiving any sort of rescinding, that basement's free everything. And I'd like to have it taken out of the Tiff area. We talked on it, you know, the state of Indiana today was announcing how there are next property taxes on businesses, so that the city has less money, the salaries have less, like, the schools and libraries have less money. This is a whole state we're putting in a Tiff area. And I think my library and my school needs this. This is an apartment building where lots of people will be living. And they will need lots of services. And, you know, it doesn't really matter, Greenwood anyway, in many ways, it's going to be an average of about $1,000 more dollars a month for, to live there, if you're following 30% rule for your first income. And you look at the average Amazon salary of $16.97. These people working in parks, they can't go $12,800 short, meaning if you live in a modest, well, they say it's a luxury apartment, but let's be honest, they say a luxury apartment is based on having outdoor seating and a expensive grill out there. It's a small, little apartment. They're not luxury, no matter what they say about it. Yeah, it's a little bit of an apartment complex, say in Denver. This is not a luxury apartment complex. It's just a smaller apartment complex. Fit well, careful. And, you know, high schools are really taking a lot of pressure from these sorry warehouses. And the low pay was bringing in people who were just unskilled labor. And they're bringing in their families. You know, the city, Greenwood Community Schools, Manhattan, hire a group of teachers to teach all these kids those languages. Well, if they're in this Tiff fund, high school doesn't get any money for that. So we're just subsidizing the warehouses again with all the money. And I think that's for high schools and for these people who need services and for the parks, the Greenwood Park Mall. And right now, we don't have enough money for salaries. We don't have a code inspector. Last time I heard, in the Greenwood Park Mall, there's trash everywhere. The Sears, all those are still says Sears, even though they closed in 2018. It's a sorry dump. They need more resources, and having all this trash in the Tiff areas is bad for the city, and it's bad for me, and it's bad for you. And so I hope that as this comes up, that you will pull this stuff out of the Tiff area and not give it any subsidies because the city needs every dime they can get. I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Marbert. All right, anyone else wishing to address the council at this time, either here or online? All right, moving on. Miss Lane's business from the council. We have two conflicts of interest.
Yes, sir. First, Kevin Hoover, is a member of the RDC, attorney for the library board and the conference that may arise from there.
I have a motion to approve, someone, was Mr. Harper, second by Ms. Gibson. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, likewise. Passes unanimously.
Next is Brian Harris, employee of Fifth Third Bank, which the city may invest the money from and do business with time for time.
I have a motion, someone, Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Harper. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passes unanimously. Any other business from the council? All right, other Miss Lane's business, Corporation Council.
None.
Controller. Mayor.
I have nothing.
All right, we are adjourned.